...
Thank you, Mr. Zago. We could have just a moment of silence, please. Thank you. Approval agenda.
So moved.
A motion by Mr. Blair and a second by Ms. Blankenship. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Approval consent agenda.
So moved. Second.
A motion by Mr. Young and a second by Mr. Blair. Any further discussion on that? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number six, investors. I don't believe we have any investors. Number seven, Mr. Odom.
It's my pleasure to introduce you to some of our new staff members to start this year. First one is Helen Campbell, who is the principal of Walker Hill Elementary School now. Would you stand up, Ms. Campbell? Glad to have her on board with us. She's came from Cedar Grove. And Amy Patton is the principal of Smyrna Elementary School now, because her principal left and sitting back there too. She was assistant principal there before. Great place to be. Thank you. And Trey Duuk is a response to intervention and instructional technology coordinator. And that's a change in title. That was Amy Blanton's position, which was really software technology. You have hardware, which was under Gary's department, you know, for the wiring and all. So instructional software, but we repurposed this and he's kind of taken that role on along with a year from now, in July first, two thousand and fourteen, the state will be doing a response to intervention squared is what they're calling it plan. So it's a process of how be tracking students' progress throughout the year and that sort of thing, which will work with special education and several other factors like that. So he was formerly the principal of Smyrna Elementary School and Ms. Patton took his place. Glad to have you with us.
Do we need to wish them well?
It's painfully obvious that they're getting younger.
Yeah. Well, maybe they'll be challenged.
Anybody else? Number eight, Mr. Odom.
Number eight is facilities. Eight A is deductive change order for Smyrna Middle School kitchen hood replacement. Hawke Mechanical Incorporated has submitted a deductive change order in the amount of twenty-two thousand, one hundred dollars. This will reduce the original contract sum from one hundred and thirty-seven thousand down to one hundred and fourteen thousand, nine hundred dollars for Smyrna Middle kitchen hood replacement. The deduction is for refund of items that were in the initial estimate such as HVAC ductwork removal replacement and ceiling removal replacement totaling twenty-two thousand, one hundred dollars. Recommend approval. Motion to approve the deductive change order submitted by Hawke Mechanical Incorporated in the amount of twenty-two thousand, one hundred for the hood replacement completed at Smyrna Middle School. This will reduce the contract amount to one hundred and fourteen thousand, nine hundred dollars.
Move to approve.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Packett and a second by Mr. Blair. Any further discussion on this? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Eight B.
Stewart's Creek High School football practice field. Dr. Clark Harold has requested permission to construct a football practice field at Stewart's Creek High School campus. It will be on the east side of the football stadium and will not interfere with the property buffer line. The practice field will be approximately eighty yards by one hundred yards and the cost for the irrigation will be slightly less than ten thousand dollars. The laser grading of the field will be donated by Southeastern Turf. The total cost of the project will be approximately twenty thousand dollars to be paid for by the football booster organization at Stewart's Creek High School at no cost to Rutherford County School Board. Dr. Harold has requested the practice field be considered now so that construction can begin as funds become available. Recommend approval. Motion to approve construction of a football practice field at Stewart's Creek High School as presented at no cost to the board.
So moved. Second.
I believe Ms. Blankenship speaks, Mr. Holliday.
Indeed.
A motion by Mr. Blair and a second by Ms. Blankenship. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Under financial matters, okay? Under financial matters, we have a Blackman Middle School annex bid. Bids were received for Blackman Middle School annex bid number thirty twenty-eight at two P M. on August eighth, two thousand and thirteen at the central office boardroom. Bids were received from four contractors and ranged from eight million, ninety-seven thousand to seven million, sixty-two thousand. The lowest and best bid was received from Biscayne Instruction at seven million, sixty-two thousand. Recommend approval. The motion to award the contract for the Blackman Middle School annex project to Biscayne Construction, the lowest and best bidder in the amount of seven million, sixty-two thousand.
So moved.
Second. Same motion by Mr. Blair and a second by Ms. Holliday. Any further discussion on this?
Mr. Chairman, thanks, Mr. Clardy. How many, how many facilities have they built for us so far, do you know?
I think I talked to their superintendent the other day and I'm not sure if this is told. I know some others have been trying to keep building. So I know we're doing our own ones, we've built two or three and then there's another superintendent.
You have certainly been impressed with the quality of their work.
On time.
And on time.
Certainly nice when you have someone with a track record also coming in with the best bid. I know that makes you feel good when you have that happen.
Yeah, he, they really, they know that we're going to pay them for the work they performed and they know we're going to pay them on time. They've got the work in place and they'll let them know when they have to pay. They know they're going to get a check on the payment. So, you know, they're not waiting ninety days or a hundred and twenty days or six months out to get their money. So we usually get a better price for most projects that we're working with.
And I would suspect they, they know what your expectations are now also.
And what else? All in favor, the motion say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. B.
B one, the first amendment takes six hundred and twenty-three thousand, eight hundred dollars from unassigned fund balance and transfers it to the building program in order to fund the lowest construction bid for the Blackman Middle School annex building project. The six hundred and twenty-three thousand, eight hundred dollars will be added to the building construction line for this project. And for people that's watching us on TV, maybe for the first time, we discussed this quite a bit Tuesday night, you can begin to see the turnaround now in the construction and the people bidding are busier. So from our earlier estimates, which we're usually very accurate on, we're six hundred and twenty-three thousand, eight hundred short of that. So propose this to take it from ending fund balance. So recommend approval. Motion to amend six hundred and twenty-three thousand, eight hundred dollars from the general purpose school unassigned fund balance and transfer it to fund one eighty-nine school building program with the request that the commission increase the construction amount for the Blackman Middle School annex building project by the same six hundred and twenty-three thousand, eight hundred dollars in order to fund the low construction bid.
So moved. Second.
A motion by Mr. Holliday and a second by Mr. Packett. Any further discussion on this? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number two.
Might ask this question. We will need to this go through the commission before we begin the actual project or can we, can we do the grading or some things?
We need to start with early stages.
Okay. So we've got to go back to this amendment, of course, through the commission again, this part. To a spectrum, the state has asked the gifted programs be moved from the special education major functions to the regular education major function so that Tennessee reporting will be more aligned to federal reporting. This amendment moves one million, four hundred and ninety-five thousand, eight hundred and six dollars in already budgeted expenditures to function seventy-one, one hundred. Regular education from seventy-one, two hundred, special education. And one hundred and fifteen thousand, six hundred and twenty-six in already budgeted expenditures to function seventy-two, two-ten, regular education program from seventy-two, two-twenty, special education program. Recommend approval. Motion to amend one million, four hundred and ninety-five thousand, eight hundred and six dollars in already budgeted expenses to function seventy-one, one hundred, regular education from seventy-one, two hundred, special education and to amend one hundred and fifteen thousand, six hundred and seventy-six in already budgeted expenditures to function seventy-two, two-ten, regular education program from seventy-two, two-twenty, special education program as presented.
So moved. Second.
A motion by Mr. Holliday and a second by Mr. Young. Any further discussion on this? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number three.
Number three is textbooks. This amendment takes one million, two hundred and fifty thousand from unassigned fund balance in order to increase the two thousand and fourteen budget for textbooks. One million, two hundred thousand for regular education textbooks and fifty thousand for vocational textbooks. The reading adoption textbooks were ordered during June, two thousand and thirteen. This is normally the lowest cost of any of the six years in the state's textbook adoption cycle. As orders came in, we wound up spending three million, three hundred and thirty-two thousand, nine hundred and sixty-three dollars for this adoption with growth textbooks for other subject areas. The cost of the reading adoption also increased because the state no longer allows the textbook publishers to give us as many teacher editions as we were able to get in the past. On June twenty-eighth, two thousand and thirteen, four hundred and forty-seven thousand, nine hundred and thirty-six dollars had to be added to the purchase order for the reading adoption. Mr. Sanding was already concerned from the initial reading purchase order that the three million, five hundred and twenty-two thousand, six hundred and seventeen budgeted for the two thousand and thirteen, fourteen social studies adoption and growth would not be adequate. Recommend approval. Motion to amend one million, two hundred and fifty thousand from unassigned fund balance and increases the two thousand and fourteen budget for textbooks as presented. You know what a lot of people do not realize also that, you know, we're up at least twelve hundred, it looks like this year, then you've got seven textbooks that those twelve hundred may have that you also have to purchase, it's not even in the adoption. It may be you don't have enough surface in math and English or any of the other subject areas, so.
At an average cost of a textbook these days.
While high school can go a little over a hundred dollars, your elementary is typically seventy to ninety something in that range for the six years.
So moved. Second.
A motion by Mr. Blair and a second by Mr. Nipper. Any further discussion?
On Tuesday, I wanted to reiterate a little of the discussion that we had for any of the public gathered. Mr. Packett did an excellent job of asking the persistent question about the possibility of online textbooks or some type of virtual textbook and, and the barriers to that and when the economics might put that into play. And we discussed a lot of the barriers that we continue to see, not only just the hardware technology that, that we're faced with, which we may be able to make up some ground with the state helping us out this coming year with a influx of funds that will allow us to hopefully meet what we need for online testing. But that doesn't necessarily equip every single student. Then we talked about the connectivity of the textbooks. A lot of the textbooks that we get today have a, an online textbook possibility, even though we buy the hard textbook, we have access to that online copy and we see in that that there's connectivity where you have to click through and it goes on to other resources without an internet connection, which may or may not be available to the student at home. You know, that textbook may not be as effective as the hardbound textbook. I just want to reiterate some of that discussion that we had on Tuesday night so that the public knows that online textbooks are certainly a consideration for our system and something that we're very, very aware of and looking for the right opportunity.
It's the devices to store them on for over forty thousand pupils also, so it's not just the book by itself.
All right. Number four.
Number four is an energy position initially funded by grant. This amendment funds sixty-four thousand, nine hundred and eighteen dollars for the energy management position that is part of the Energy Efficient School Council, E E S C. One hundred and sixty-seven thousand, sixty dollar allocation to Rutherford County Schools to establish an ongoing energy management program. Mr. Clardy plans to fill this position as a maintenance worker for lead. The revenue will be recorded in account forty-six, five ninety, other state revenue. The balance of the grant will be handled by a later amendment. Recommend approval. Motion to amend sixty-four thousand, nine hundred and eighteen dollars in other state revenue account forty-six, five ninety and to amend sixty-four thousand, nine hundred and eighteen in staff and benefits for the systems' energy manager as presented.
So moved. Second.
A motion by Mr. Young and a second by Mr. Holliday. Any further discussion on this? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number five.
Number five is career ladder. This amendment reduces the systems' career ladder extended contract revenue and related career ladder expenditure by thirty-seven thousand, five hundred and seven dollars. The amendment also reclassifies the superintendent's chief operating officer supplement from career ladder extended contracts, seventy-two, three twenty dash one twenty-seven to career ladder seventy-two, three twenty dash one seventeen in order to match state reporting. Recommend approval. Motion to reduce career ladder extended contract revenue account forty-six, six twelve and the related career ladder expenditure by thirty-seven thousand, five oh seven and to reclassify the superintendent's chief operating officer supplement as presented.
So moved. Second.
A motion by Mr. Packett and a second by Mr. Blair. Any further discussion on this? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. C.
C is capital projects or fund one seventy-seven amendment for ongoing projects. Each year, all capital projects fund outstanding purchase orders are liquidated on July one and the unexpected amounts revert to fund balance. This amendment effectively sets up the unexpended funds that were on these closed purchase orders as of June thirtieth, two thousand and thirteen. This year's amendment covers four unfinished projects for a total of four hundred and sixteen thousand, one hundred and eighty-four dollars. Those four projects are the Smyrna Laverne Stadium seating, one hundred and fifty-five thousand, one hundred and fifty-five dollars. Smyrna Middle Roofing, two hundred and twenty-six thousand, forty-six dollars. Central Office Paving, ten thousand, seven hundred and thirty-five dollars. And repairs to Angie Road at Wilson Elementary School, twenty-four thousand, two hundred and forty-eight dollars. Recommend approval. Motion to amend four hundred and sixteen thousand, one hundred and eighty-four from the capital project fund balance in order to complete two thousand and twelve, two thousand and thirteen projects as presented.
So moved. Second.
A motion by Ms. Holliday and a second by Mr. Nipper. Any further discussion on this? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Uh, D, I think we discussed that it's just information on, on insurance. Mr. Blair?
One more question. We have what? Forty-five hundred employees?
It's something over four thousand, forty-four. Paul's holding up forty-four thousand, forty-four hundred.
And, and I've read this two or three times and from January first to February seventeenth, we've got to, we have to have all of those employees have blood drawn. Right. Oh, okay. Oh, okay. So it's a year, it's a year and a month, not a month and a half. Okay. I guess I didn't read it close enough.
If a teacher someone had as part of their physical, maybe during the summer, spring, they should be able to report that if they had lipid tests.
Anybody else? Number ten.
Propose central office position. The director of schools contract states that any new central office positions must have board approval. The position, the proposed position is a two hundred and sixty-day contract for an instructional specialist to support reading, language, arts instruction on behalf of elementary school students, teachers, and administrators. The job description provides more detailed expectations for this position. That's your attachment. Recommend approval. Motion to approve a new two hundred and sixty-day central office position for an elementary reading specialist.
So moved. Second.
A motion by Ms. Holliday and a second by Mr. Blair. Any further discussion on this?
It is surprising the impact that Mr. Odom has been able to display to us that a specialist in this way can bring to each and every classroom through the training with the P L Cs and, and the coordination. I really think that this is an important position and, and I appreciate Mr. Odom bringing it.
Most any system our side have had this position for some time.
Anybody else? All in favor, the motion say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number eleven, we'll handle that whichever way the board wants, all the policies. If you want to just, unless somebody wants to go through each individual one.
I suggest we just read the recommendations since we've all gone through them specifically.
Everybody good with that? Senator Odom.
The first motion, we recommend approval. Motion to waive the second reading, second meeting limitation to allow the board to take immediate action on the policies presented.
So moved.
So many, so many of these are, I'm sorry.
A motion by Mr. Blair and a second by Ms. Blankenship.
So many of these are statutes that we're enacting, so we don't waive the second one routinely, but we need to discuss.
I was thinking the same thing is, we wanted to make sure we highlighted that, that the second reading is intended that we change policy slowly, carefully, and methodically, but these are directed by changes that were made at the state legislature and things that we are adjusting policy in order to be in compliance with. So it does make sense with the start of the school year to go ahead and waive the second reading cautiously.
Anybody else? All in favor, the motion say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Second quarter.
Okay, recommend approval. Motion to approve policies, six point three oh nine, five point three oh seven, one point one oh eight, three point two oh two, six point two hundred, six point three one six, four point three oh one, five point three oh five, one point seven oh three, one point eight oh two, six point three oh four, four point two oh four, four point six oh one, three point two one one, six point four zero three one, six point two oh four, one point four oh seven, three point four oh five, and six point four oh nine one as recommended by the policy committee.
So moved. Second.
A motion by Mr. Young and a second by Mr. Packett. Any further discussion?
Another point of clarification, just to be clear. This body is on that policy committee, but there's also a right at an equal number of people that are on it outside of this board, including a parent, maybe two administrators and so forth. So it is not just school board just passing our own recommendations. This has gone through a committee that, that is about twice its size.
In anticipation of the board putting these policies in place, a number of these are in student handbooks that have been distributed at the beginning of the school year. I think that it's important, if we've got a zero tolerance offense, which is one of the ones that we're adjusting here, that that be noted for the public and for the record. And one of the substantial additions there is that electronic threats are now a zero tolerance offense. So in so many ways, what the student may do in text or in email or in virtual world is very, very serious and our school system is going to take it that way. So we want to make sure that all the students and parents take note of things that are in the student handbook.
Anybody else? All in favor, the motion say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. I'd like just once again to tell Ms. McCloud I appreciate the doubt she did on getting everything. I think we had seventeen, eighteen policies we dealt with, so I just appreciate you taking care of all of that. Number twelve, Mr. Evans.
Okay, Parish Ron and Regina Harvey are requesting a zone exemption for their tenth grade child to attend Stewart's Creek High School instead of Laverne High School. The request has been denied previously because exemptions out of Laverne High School into Stewart's Creek High School are not permitted to help preserve the new zones approved by the board in December, two thousand and twelve. And the Harvey family, if they would, to want to plan to speak, would stand up. Ms. McCloud will swear their name. You're welcome. Tell them, tell them why you're willing his own.
All right. Thank you very much for the opportunity. Thank you, Mr. Odom and members of the school board. As you know, my name is Regina Harvey and over there is my husband, Ron. And on the end is our oldest son, Ross, our daughter, Ryan, and our youngest son, Reed. And I really do appreciate the opportunity to come and speak to you and I hope that you'll allow us just a couple of minutes to share our journey with you and what has brought us here tonight. Our oldest son, Ross, is a two thousand and eight graduate of Laverne High School and he also just graduated from Tennessee Tech in two thousand and twelve studying communications and sports journalism. Our daughter, Ryan, is a senior at Laverne and she's actually taking part in the dual enrollment program. So she is a part of that beginning this year. And our son, Reed, is currently a sophomore at Laverne High after completing a very successful freshman year. And you may wonder, how do we get here? How did we end up in this place? And I'll be totally honest with you. We're a Christian family and before I go on, I think it's important to say what that means to us. It's a word we hear all the time, Christian. And so for us, it means that we each individually recognize that all sin and that we fall short of the glory of God and that the wage of that sin is death, but that the gift of God is eternal life through Jesus Christ our Lord. And finally, that means we believe that Jesus died on the cross for those sins and that he was buried and then on the third day he raised from the dead and then he is victorious over sin and over the grave. And so in light of that, if God did all of that through Jesus, his son, how could we as Christians not live for him every day? And sometimes that means standing in front of a school board talking about faith. Sometimes it means sharing your faith with students in school. It brings us to many different places, but the gift is so great. How could we not live every day for God and try to follow him and obey the things that he tells us to do? So that includes seeking guidance for everything that we do and then following the instructions that he gives, no matter what the cost. And so we've always prayed about the decisions for those three kids, where they go. Every year since nineteen ninety-five, we have been to private school, magnet school, public school, homeschool. We've done any number of things, but every year there's a prayerful decision for each one of them. So imagine our surprise when our little train took a different turn and we really feel convinced that God is leading us in move and read in a direction that leads him to Stewart's Creek. That's the long and short of it. And so we ask and stand here just simply saying the truth that we need your approval for him to be able to do that. It allows us to then serve God, obey him, bring him glory, and send our child to Stewart's Creek where we feel that he belongs. One thing that's interesting throughout the whole process, there's one song that comes up over and over again and I won't sing, you'll be glad, but it's from Psalm one oh seven and it just simply says, "Give thanks to the Lord, for he is good. His love endures forever." And then verse two of that psalm says, "Let the redeemed of the Lord tell their story." So thanks for letting us tell our story. That's the long and the short of it. Thanks for your time.
Do the board members have any questions for Ms. Harvey?
I'll certainly speak. First of all, what a beautiful family you have. I'll start to speak, and first of all, what a beautiful family you have. And the success is already there, and, and clearly, uh, we, I've sat on this board for now three years, served on the other side of the fence as the principal of a high school prior to that, and so I've been through a lot of those exemptions, uh, and it, it's always hard when you're not able to give passionate parents and caring parents and all those kind of things what they feel like is, is best. The, the, this one falls under category the first time that I think we've ever been approached by one where you felt like specifically you're led by God for something, and more speak out against that, very difficult to do. Yet, I don't know how many zone exemption requests you had, not, not specifically from Laverne to Stewart's Creek, but I'm, I'm sure there's a thousand per year or, or more.
So we're actually at fifteen hundred.
So it's a matter of consistency for us, and there's a large number of people that have been denied based upon, I think typically, I think about the, the two things that, that kind of fall into categories where we feel like we can make those kinds of things, and it, it, it is an individual, case by case, that's why you're able to be here. But if some traumatic event has happened in a child's life that prevents them from being successful, or some medical, uh, consideration needs to be taken care of, uh, but in order to be consistent with what our policy is and has been, and the families that we've had denied in the past, I, I can't support, and I'm sorry to say that, but I can't support the exemption.
Ryan?
Z, can you put that in form of a motion?
Well, I, I will at a point, having someone else has something they want to speak to.
Mr. Holiday?
The board has responsibility to review the zone exemption in the light of has some insufficiency occurred along the way. Uh, specifically, uh, our oversight is of the director, and when the appeal comes to the director, then has he considered it appropriately and with, uh, an unbiased perspective and rendered an appropriate decision? Uh, as I look at the documents and your, uh, presentation, uh, there are a few things that are notable, and, uh, one is that your son, in his letter, indicated an interest in a specific curriculum, uh, a curriculum of broadcasting or journalism that we have, we should take note is, uh, going to be uniquely equipped and, and have an opportunity at Stewart's Creek. However, earlier, uh, as we considered zone exemptions, we also considered a dental program, uh, that was a zone exemption request, and we noted at that time that the coursework for that was something that would occur in a junior or senior status, not necessarily at a freshman status. And so we encouraged that person that when the time came, that that curriculum was specifically appropriate and necessary, that the system would likely make provision that a, a, a specific interest would be, uh, accommodated. Um, perhaps that may be a similar encouragement. Uh, we sometimes feel a direction and, uh, and a, and a calling, uh, in our lives through our faith, and yet we don't always know the timing, and, uh, so it may be that the timing is yet to come. Uh, similarly, we have a statement in the application for zone exemptions that's unique to the time period that we're in, uh, that says that zone exemptions will not be permitted out of Laverne High School or Smyrna High School to help preserve the zones approved by Rutherford County Board of Education on December fourth, two thousand twelve. Certainly to ensure the stability of our system and the startup at Stewart's Creek, there were some unique circumstances that we had to put in place for zone exemptions. We wanted to make sure that all of these schools were good learning environments, and the board is committed to that. Um, all of these things indicate to me that today it is not, uh, a, a zone exemption that I can see reason to, uh, change any of the previous decisions. But I would encourage you to consider when the academic, uh, pursuits are specific and that broadcasting and communications, uh, coursework is unique, and maybe the statement about the, the Laverne High School and Smyrna High School and Stewart's Creek preservation would not be specific on the zone exemption form, and there may be another time when this request may, uh, may find a, a different, uh, reception. I'll make the motion then, uh, Mr. Tackett, if you don't mind, uh, that the board, uh, support the ruling of the director's schools.
Make the second.
A motion by Mr. Holiday and a second by Mr. Nipper.
May I just say a quick statement also? To support what Mr. Tackett has said, that we've always, in our past history, used compelling arguments. We all appreciate you sharing your faith with, with us tonight, because I believe we're all of great faith also. What is so very cool for us is that you've had remarkable success at Laverne High School, and because you as parents, as you as a family, you're all accountable to each other, and, and that will determine your success in the future for, for your son. And I am, I am convinced and I am content that, that he will succeed and do, do just as well or even better than the older children, and, and I hope you take solace in that.
Anybody else? Ms. Marcus, if you don't mind, uh, call her, please.
Just for, so we know which way we're going here, please state the, the motion.
A motion made by Mr. Holiday, seconded by Mr. Nipper to support the ruling of the, of the board of the student, of the director of school, his recommendation.
So we'll be affirming.
Mr. Odom's recommendation to deny.
Okay.
Mr. Holiday?
Yes.
Ms. Blackenship?
Yes.
Mr. Blair?
Yes.
Mr. Tackett?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Nipper?
Yes.
Mr. Hodge?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Ms. Harvey, I'd, I'd like to just say, uh, uh, that I appreciate you coming and, and going through the process. Uh, I believe anybody that, that feels strongly about their, their own children would do the same thing, and, and, uh, uh, I do hope that, uh, your son does continue to do well at Laverne, and, uh, like I said, once again, I just appreciate you coming, coming tonight.
Thank you, thank you, I know that, I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Number thirteen, Mr. Holiday.
Thirteen is collaborative conferencing committee. Pursuant to Tennessee Code Annotated, Section forty-nine, five, six oh five, the Board of Education is required to appoint management personnel to serve on a committee, this collaborative conferencing committee. Board of Education representatives for collaborative conferencing committee are Paula Barnes, Richard Zagow, Trey Duke, Kim Day, Kelly Gustrie, Fred Barlow, and Jeannie Fitzpatrick.
That's just information only, I guess. Uh, fourteen, general discussion.
Ms. Hodge, let me, let me give, uh, uh, an affirmation of joy to me, a young lady that, uh, I was able to coach girls' basketball at Laverne High School when she graduated there in nineteen ninety. Uh, her name is Toni Wright, Toni's, and I can't call her married name, I just remember Toni, and I hate that Shirley Bell's not here, but Shirley's daughter, uh, played on the same basketball team. Toni's been battling cancer, breast cancer, and she got a report just a few days back. She's cancer-free, and I just want to share how our relationship sometimes goes way back, and we still are able to keep in touch with folks like that and, and sharing their, their joys, in this case, the, the trauma she's gone through, that I just want to share that. I felt like it was important that we recognize that, uh, our kids not only go through basketball practices and, and graduations and so forth, but they've got life and got a wonderful young lady that's, I think, a junior or senior at Smyrna High School right now, anyway. Toni, where'd you go?
Anybody else? Ms. Blair?
Just, uh, maybe Mr. Odom, you might speak to our, uh, increase in students, uh, who were over a thousand, increased last year, and it looks like we're gonna, uh, beat that this year.
Uh, you have a, a couple of sheets probably that's in your packet today that kind of shows from registration day, um, through today, um, and compares to the end of year enrollment in twelve thirteen. Um, some years you, um, have, uh, you have some loss of students, but last year, we saw some grow slowly all year long. So the enrollment at the end of the year was thirty-nine thousand, six hundred and seventy-one. The enrollment today, as best that we can tell, and this will change over the next few days still, is forty thousand, nine hundred and fifteen, and so that's one thousand, two hundred and forty-four more students. Remember last year, that growth, uh, came to one thousand, about one thousand twelve. The year before, it was something like five forty. So it looks like, you know, and, and this year's going to be another over one thousand, and it, it will continue to grow a little bit typically, but follows normal patterns. Um, used to say after Labor Day, but we cause so many school systems start before Labor Day now, we don't see as much bump then as we used to, but my guess is it will continue to grow certainly through next week probably.
In the, uh, freshman class at Stewart's Creek, uh, is it close to?
It was five hundred and forty-something, I think I read the other night. Do you have that other sheet with you, Mr. Zagow? I believe it was, I think I looked at Tuesday night when you asked, I think it was five hundred and forty, something like that. Something, if I remember correctly, five forty-two or something like that.
And the, uh, Smyrna Town Council, uh, the other night annexed, uh, a, uh, development of two hundred and twenty-nine lots adjacent to Stewart's Creek High School.
Maybe there are no schools on. Mr. Holiday?
Also, success of our system, uh, it is unique and, uh, notable that the drum major of both the MTSU Band of Blue and the University of Tennessee, uh, Marching Southerners, I think, uh, the, uh, University of Tennessee Band, both of those drum majors are alumni of Rutherford County Schools, uh, actually alumni of Laverne High School. And, uh, so, uh, Rutherford County students leading both of those bands into the fall season.
Pride of the Southland.
Pride of the Southland.
Alabama wouldn't know that.
Well, you went to Alabama, so.
I, I, I learned yesterday also that, uh, on September the twenty-first, the Segal High School Band has been extended the, the opportunity to go and play with the Pride of the South Band at, at UT, so I think they're accepting an invitation for that on September twenty-first, I, I believe is the date.
Well, I tell you, uh, MTSU, as far as I'm concerned, uh, uh, the way they play and the way they get involved in, in the activities, I, I, I put them against anybody. I, I just take so much pride in, in our, in our home university's, uh, band. It's just, it, it's amazing and exciting to watch.
I was amazed how good Stewart's Creek High School was, which consisted of so many freshmen and sophomores because of the grandfather, and they didn't have as many juniors and seniors transfer over. How, they sound like they've been playing together for so long. Uh, just amazing on the, the day we had the open house.
And the development of the, uh, of the fight song, by, you know, by the coordination and collaboration of the music department, I thought that was impressive also.
I have another specific possible question. It's five hundred and twenty-nine, so I'd say those, uh...
Four of those together, it comes over two thousand.
One of the people who would look at those numbers that you have in front of you, he'll notice that, uh, Riverdale Hospital only has all the substances from where they worked in the last year, and they'll have transferred or re-zoned, meaning more. And, uh, if you look at the four schools that would get, uh, re-zoned, which is Riverdale, Laverne, Smyrna, and Blackman High School, they're all down combined about eight hundred students while Stewart's Creek High School is up for it.
And, uh, and, and Blackman High School's still over two thousand?
Yes, sir.
Anybody else? Everybody good? Or drunk?